The prayer today is, oh God of creation, you have blessed us with the changing of the seasons. Remind us of the wonder of your creation. Remind us that it's you who give us the breath of life. Amen. Linda, want to start it off?
Yes, sir. On March 6th, I approved a supplemental appropriation to correct appropriations in the demo and site revitalization fund in order to release a payment to a vendor. On March 10th, I approved a revision to the hiring of Christopher Makar to the position of full-time recreation and education assistant, number 1005, to be effective March 17th, 2025, previously March 24, 2025. At the rate of $19.23 per hour within a one-year probationary period, this offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number three, Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of March 4th, 2025.
So moved.
Okay. Yes.
Adrian Gordon, Commissioner's Office. So today's financials include a supplemental appropriations from the Commissioners to the Veterans Commission in their grave markers expense account for the courthouse veterans memorial renovation project. Michelle Pemberton has indicated that she would like to start that project after this year's Maple Festival. And this is the one towards the end of last year that you guys allowed them to use some of their unappropriated or unused monies from from last year for for this renovation. There's a cash transfer from the general fund to community development for their fourth quarter 2024 payroll funding reimbursement. There's a transfer from the Board of DD from their operating fund to the residential services fund for Medicaid waiver and locally funded services. And there's transfers from water resources sewer and water funds to debt retirement for their first half 2025 debt service payments. There's then announced from emergency services to Esperon Logistics LLC for the annual WENS Emergency Notification System Service Agreement, which has not been previously encumbered. Among the vouchers is $799,702.55 from the Commissioner's Office to Infinity Construction Company for pay request number 17 of the courthouse expansion project and $753,858, $753,858.77 from Community Development to ICT Joggle Lake LLC for the fourth and final draw on the demolition project in the Joggle Lake District being paid for by a demo grant received from the state. And finally, there's a revenue certification from the Common Pleas Court in their drug court fund for additional unbudgeted state grant money that has been received in 2025.
Make a motion to approve the financials from March 11th, 2025.
So. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, Commissioner's Office requesting the board approve and execute resolution recognizing recognition from March 16th to the 22nd, 2025 National Agriculture Week. Heather, floor.
Do you guys want to come up?
Yes.
The one I'm allowing.
I guess we're here on behalf of Joddy County Farm Bureau just representing the farmers in the county and want to thank the Commissioners for recognizing the significance of the agriculture industry in the county and what we provide for the residents.
Very good. It's an important part of this county, no doubt.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
Second. Yes. Very good. Any big projects planned or?
Nothing that we can talk about yet.
Yeah. One of the things that I think is going to be a big plus is last year. We were able to get some of that money over to to the Fair Board to have an additional auction area and, you know, for the following and stuff. So that should be a big plus to try to continue to keep it agriculture and 4H and all those projects motivated. So, yeah.
That will make a huge difference at the fairgrounds.
So, yeah.
Be very nice.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. No, very good. Well, thank you for all you do.
All right.
Yep. Have a great day.
You want your resolution?
Yeah.
And at the meeting today, when I was there at 7:30 for the planning commission, there's the new program that we're going to start farmland preservation. And they're going to leave now to you for Farm Bureau input. Maybe one or two people on the eight-person committee. Thank you. Number six.
Good morning, Shane Djar, deputy with County Engineers Office. Item number six, County Engineers Office requesting the board approve and execute the title sheet, the plans for the asphalt resurfacing of Wilson Mills Road, County Highway 0008, sections G through L in Monson Township.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Yes.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
For.
Good morning.
Morning Gina.
Good morning.
Gina Hofstadter, Community and Economic Development. And I have item number seven today, which is Community and Economic Development Department is requesting the board acknowledge receipt of the statement of qualifications for architects and engineering firms to be considered for the projects by the departments under the Commissioner's hiring authority and remain on file for one year through March 11th, 2026. Including architects are Byron D. Myers Architect LLC, GPD Group, LDA Architects, Technical Assurance, Then Design, Tax TBA, and Verdantis, and engineers. Barrington Consulting Group Incorporated, Buckley Group Doing Business as Hess and Associates Engineering Incorporated, GPD Group SME Small and Engineering, TEC Tech Incorporated Engineering and Design, and Technical Assurance, Verdantis.
Gina, how do you get on the list?
Oh, well. So typically somewhere around January, we will send out solicitation for their requests for qualifications. I think we're up to about 40. We try to add to it every year. You'll get two or three back that maybe are either out of business or moved or something along those lines. Most recently, as of last year, we did allow people to send us back their qualifications digitally, which really helped get some more on file. It's been a challenge. It really has. Working with the maintenance department, we are going to possibly make some changes next year to maybe broaden it out and do some paid advertising just to kind of reach a larger audience on these qualifications. So, but yeah, we were we're pretty happy. We think I think we ended up with two more than we received, two or three more from last year.
Okay. Great. I'll make a motion to approve seven.
So.
Thank you.
Yes.
What?
Matt Soraki, Maintenance Department. I have eight and nine today. So the first one is for the batteries for the UPS systems at 470 in the annex. UPS being uninterrupted power supply. So the maintenance department is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreement with E Technologies Incorporated to upgrade the batteries of the UPS units located at the Geoga County Courthouse Annex and 470 Center Street offices with work to be completed within 90 days of execution effective March 11th, 2025 in an amount not to exceed $15,042.
And is this for a server backup that was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And is there a generator then as well?
Not at 470.
Okay, so it's just it's just the UPS for the server.
Right.
Got it. All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Yes. Thank you.
And then number nine, the maintenance department is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreement with Geoga Door Sales and Service Incorporated to install garage doors at various county locations, including 470 Center Street, Buildings 7 and 8, and the West Geoga Senior Center with work to be completed within 90 days of execution effective March 11th, 2025 in an amount not to exceed $19,750.
So can you talk about the ones at 470? I mean, because my my concern is just putting extra money into those buildings, which obviously we're not going to have.
Right.
Long term. So can you talk about those projects? Like, what sort of state are those stores in?
Very, very rough shape. Building eight is archives. We don't use that one much, but it is like a safety hazard just about. Building seven, we use daily. And, you know, that's that's getting towards the end of its life, but the majority of this $19,750 is at West Geoga.
Okay, that's what that was my next question. What what the? How they were divvying up?
Yeah.
Those two properties.
I want to say three quarters of it is West Geoga. They're bigger doors. There's more of them.
Okay.
There's more work involved in getting those installed. So.
Okay, so you feel like at this point, it's really the 470 ones are a safety.
Yeah.
Insecurity issue if we don't fix those.
Right.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve nine.
Second. Yes. All right.
Thank you very much.
Morning. Nick Goriswater Resources. Item 10 on the agenda is this is the formal request to award the bid to shook construction for the McFarland Creek wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Original tentative action was on January 14th. The amount is $30,824,400 even just to note on the original action on the 14th, we had 24,000. We had 42,000. It should have been 24. So the corrected number is noted here. So if there is a question.
It sounds like you saved us money, Nick. That's what I heard.
There you go.
Yeah.
I'll take that one. So the loan was actually, we were pending the tentative award because we were waiting on the loan approval, which was awarded or approved on February 27th.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve 10.
Second. Yes. Item 11 on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Go Green Heating, Air Conditioning Doing Businesses, Auburn Heating Plumbing and Air Conditioning perform HVAC and plumbing maintenance services at various locations throughout our facilities in the county.
I'll make a motion to approve 11.
Second. Yeah. Item 12 is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Lake Business Products to perform copier maintenance and printer maintenance at various locations within the department effective March 11th, 2025 for for the period and the amount is 35,000, 10,000 to cover through August 24. So there's going to be a then and now on this as we were going back and forth with our salesperson. They just couldn't get things right with us with the legal agreements. We finally got it. So there's going to be a period where we're going to go backwards on this. And then the rest will cover the rest of this year. So.
Have you looked at? Have you done quotes from different companies?
So we are actually working with ADP right now. We have a request and to actually start looking at like the Dex products.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Yeah, because I see that on the financials, that Dex imaging, and I wonder if there's maybe some economy of scale that can be done.
Right. So that was, we have that. We were our last quarterly update and then recently as early as Saturday morning, I sent some information over to ADP.
Okay.
To get them the information on the copiers because we run copiers. We have five copiers, you know, throughout plus a whole bunch of printers. So we're looking at, you know, getting out from underneath this lake business, which was an agreement that had started. We purchased the equipment six years ago. So some of our even our equipment is getting into that.
Yeah.
We started that conversation to review our options.
Okay. Well, that sounds good. So you're you're thinking you'll do this one-year agreement and then next year we'll see something about.
Hopefully we'll have that in front of you before the end of this year.
Okay.
So that we won't be have this then and now scenario going on.
That sounds better. All right. I'll make a motion to approve 12.
Second. Yes. Thank you.
Item 13, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board appoint Michael David, acting chief building official effective immediately and remaining until the chief building official position is filled.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Yes.
We have 11 minutes before the hearing, so we can skip.
Just keep going.
Yeah, let's see.
Just go to item 15.
Okay.
Who wants to read that?
Nobody. Don't ask who wants to do it.
15, 16, and 17 are all related to each other. So the first one is the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board acknowledge the submittal of resolution 2025-03 dated February 11, 2025 from the Monson Township Board of Trustees petitioning the judge and work commissioners to vacate the easement upon all San Antonio Trail pursuant to section 555.3.045 of the revised code and also acknowledge the resolution was withdrawn by the township via communication to the festival officer on February 21st, 2025 due to technical defects.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Hi.
Yes.
And then number 16 is the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board acknowledge the resolution 2205-6 received on March 3, 2025, petitioning the judge and work commissioners to vacate the easement upon all San Antonio Trail pursuant to section 555.3.045 of the revised code.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Yes.
And then number 17. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board to receive the resolution number 25-038 that convenience and welfare may require the proposed vacation of the public right of way upon San Antonio Trail TR 753 in Monson Township, John County, Ohio pursuant to section 555.045 of the revised code and further setting public hearing on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 at 9:45 a.m. Notice of the public hearing will be advertised on March 20, 2025, March 1st, 7, 2025, and on County Buckside.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Yes.
18, 19, and 20 are also all relating to each other. The first is the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board acknowledge the submittal of a petition for annexation expedited between the Village of Middlefield, Middlefield Township and Lake Avenue Land Partners Limited on February 25th, 2025 for permanent parcel number 18054810 for 64.71 acres to be annexed into the village of Middlefield pursuant to ORC 79.021 and 709.022 and also acknowledge that the petition was withdrawn by the Village of Middlefield via communication from the Administrator Economic Development Director on February 26, 2025 due to a technical defect.
You're catching all those defects, weren't you, Kristy?
There was several issues with both of them. So.
I'll make a motion to approve 18.
Second. Yes.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board acknowledge receipt of a second submittal of a petition for annexation expedited between the Village of Middlefield, Middlefield Township and Lake Avenue Land Partners Limited for permanent parcel number 18054810 for 64.71 acres to be annexed into the Village of Middlefield pursuant to ORC 79.021 and 709.022.
I move to approve.
Second. Yes.
And then because this is an expedited annexation agreement, according to the ORC, the next item is the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution 25039 to grant the petition of Lake Avenue Land Partners Limited for the annexation of permanent parcel 18054810 for 64.71 acres currently located in Middlefield Township to the Village of Middlefield, John County, Ohio pursuant to ORC 709.021 and 709.022.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Riffing through. Let's go.
That was 19.
That was number 21.
20.
So number 21.
This is the. Yours got a hoarse voice.
It will be better next year. I know it will.
We're going to have to do number four next week, just so y'all know.
Oh, how many? Okay.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve the resolution 25-40 for the third amended resolution approving the use of county credit cards for the year 2025 for additional users, employees, for agencies in the Commissioner's Office for the Department on Aging for their Centerra, Marx, Glassman, and PNC John Eagle, and Common Pleas Court Visa. This is just to add additional employees for.
Yes. I'm going to approve 21.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
And then number 22 is the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the question of the board to execute the application for the use of county credit cards for adding the additional users, employees for the Department on Aging and the Common Pleas.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Yes.
Then one more is ADP. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the certification request to county auditor request to the board commissioners for the quarterly use of county credit cards pursuant to ORC 301.27 for the year 2025 for John Family Services, updating quarters one and two for the John Credit Union Visa.
Do we know what advertising JFS is doing? I don't think it. No one's here from JFS. I just saw that's what the statement said. That's for advertising.
I'm going to guess that it's the majority of the advertising that they would be doing would be for a length of purposes.
Oh, that makes sense. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Yes.
We have time for number 24? Sure do.
Got five minutes.
Five minutes. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute contract naples form number one, increasing and extending the contract with MBC LLC DBA Multivista for photographic documentation of the Geoga County Courthouse expansion project, extending the contract 365 days, one year, through April 28, 2026, or until the project completion, and increasing the contract $8,784 for 12 months billed at $732 a month for a new total contract amount of $25,509. Because they're photographing the entire construction as it goes on so that you have a record of where the wires are in the wall, where the pipes are in the wall. Is that a pretty good description, Lee, of what they're doing?
Yes.
Just so that, you know, when somebody wants to hang something on the wall, we're not putting a nail through it.
Well, I assume there's a liability issue, correct, as well, just to make sure that they're doing what they're saying they're doing? Or is that not part of it?
It's the best best way of keeping the record of what's going on.
Yeah.
It's forever there. It's easy to go look back at. You forgot something or?
How often are they coming to photograph?
Courthouse come out about once a month.
Okay. And I mean, I see the companies based out of Columbus area. Is that where they're coming from? Columbus?
Sure.
Okay. And when is the projected completion of the courthouse project?
December.
Oh, so it's December of this year? Okay, so then I don't want to prove this till April 2026. I think we should cut it off.
Well, it is cut off because it says until project.
Yeah, but I mean, that gives them a little more leeway than I'm comfortable with. I'd rather, personally, I'd rather, you know, do this for six months or a little tighter window.
I can't change a contract at the table. Do you want us to pull it?
Um.
The current contract goes through April 28, 25. The current one. So the extension goes through April.
I just, I mean, I just my personal experience with these sort of like repeating contracts because they're more likely to keep charging us than if we had a six-month deal.
So this contract is for six more weeks?
Yes. The current one does not expire until April 20.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Table.
So we could.
And then add or subtract in the contract language.
Do you have an opinion on this, Commissioner Spudler?
You're putting drywall over it. I mean, I think that that's, they're only coming out one time a month. I really don't think that we're getting the full full aspect of what what that service really should be, you know, and I don't know if it is once a month or or.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious. Like, what's what's the hourly rate? Like, are they coming out for one hour or is it, you know what I mean? And I mean, they're not editing these photos like you would with like a family photo shoot or whatever.
I'm not sure. I mean, I think that that is a concern for that service and it's fairly healthy healthy price to be paying for for a road trip once a month to come in and photograph stuff. I don't I don't know. I that's my opinion. I'm not a building, you know, builder, but but I think that you can probably close up a lot of areas in a month's time. Lately, ever respond.
Well, the contractor has daily photos and we, as the architects, come out weekly photos. We are tracking what's happening. Like you say, in a month's time, they're coming out and just doing a one-time shoot of all the rooms and then they, you know, that's a record of what happened in that month.
So this is the third photo that's being done? So you're there's two different, three different companies doing photos every?
But as architects, we're responsible for a lot of youth site. So we take photos all the time. The contractor whose building always takes photos just of what they're building daily. They have a daily recourse. They put photos in daily reports.
So this sounds more ceremonial than it sounds like as far as like neat for, you know, for the for the for what we're really looking for is if the contractor is doing that in that in that scope of what they're taking photographs of and you guys are taking photos, why do we really need these people?
Well, this multi-estu, so that's a company. They will go into every single room and they shoot a 360 of that room. And then you can search, you know, by date of what would it look like on that down month, but they give every single room. I mean, contractors not do every single room.
I mean, it's like a third party too. It's like a third party that's documenting it. I don't know, but I guess to be totally honest with you, the difference is this is that's maybe great as far as, you know, that would make really neat video of start to finish, you know, it's like somebody putting a camera and speed, you know, speed sensing it from when the sun rose and sunset on over a lakefront. That may be what what would be nice about that. But as far as the documentation of actual work, of actual wiring and, you know, the nuts and bolts of the building, I don't know if that's really the the goal of this, right? I don't know. Just it just I it just troubles me that if we're so many, I mean, in this, listen, there's no secrets. This this job has totally gone off the rails as far as add-ons and add-ons and add-ons and more add-ons in an hour, you know, and it's like, you know, I don't know, $24,000 to to take some pictures of some progress that's already being done. I mean, I don't know. It's a tough one.
Yeah, it seems like felt since suspenders approach.
If I may add something, I'm by far not the best person to talk about this, but I have been around a few of the conversations that where this has been discussed. The the idea is that this company categorizes all the photographs, if I'm understanding correctly, to where you can search them up by room at your fingertips if you should ever want to, say, hang a picture or install something and it prevents you from, you know, tacking into a live wire or hitting a pipe and causing additional damage, which down the road could be catastrophic.
And I'm okay with that.
But like, who's going to do that? Like, people are just going to put the picture on the wall. They're not going to be like, oh, I'm going to go search for this photo in this huge database.
Database. It's easily searchable when.
I just don't see the average employee doing that.
I assume maintenance will have access to this. I don't know all there is to know. I only know a little bit, which is dangerous, but this is what I'm being told, that this is what new government buildings have in order to prevent, you know, damage down the road from, say, subsequent construction or can you move something or can you go install something? They'll have all this at their fingertips and they can.
So I think you said. So I think you said the key word their government and that usually is a lot of money.
Yeah.
So so I think that the reality is 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 that if. If they're here today and in thirty days. There could be a lot going on in one room of, you know, wiring. Pipes, you know, whatever the case may be, and drywall hung that when you come back for your picture. It's a finished room. Today it's a shell. So I don't know. I I did I I don't I don't know enough of it to to sit here and argue about it, but. It just the sound of it in thirty days. Um, you know, when somebody tells me that.
And we'll take a deep dive and bring back to you more information to where you can feel comfortable one way or another.
Well, and I mean, this thing I'm thinking about too is like, at a certain point, the drywall goes up, right? So then they're putting in, you know, the flooring and the the finishing touches and like, do we need a photo every thirty days? When they're putting in tile or millwork or or whatever. I wouldn't think so. I would think that whatever the um architect and so forth are doing is probably sufficient.
Okay, conference vote.
I I have a motion in a second. I have Commissioner Spudler's.
Oh.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes. Okay, now we'll go to back to item fourteen.
Yes.
Commissioner's office will hold a public hearing at. Channel four. Uh, regarding reemployment retired, we we retire Dan Spada for S G Building Thursday.
I have a motion to waive their reading of the legal limits.
Look.
Yeah. Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, so we are opening at ten over four. Um, and then we just have to swear in anyone that wishes to speak.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak?
No comments or questions.
Comments or questions on this item?
Well, hold on, I gotta, of course. Questions.
I can't have a question.
Yeah, uh, so, okay, so this arrangement, is this gonna cost the county more money, less money, or the same money after we we've hired? As before the retirement?
I would assume the salary is going to be the same.
How? Who decides that?
Um, that was discussed earlier this year when this first came up. In executive session.
Okay. So the salary would be the same, but what about other benefits?
I don't. I don't think. Do you qualify for benefits once once he's retired?
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, of course he does, because once he's uh, once he's hired under a public entity, you have to.
Then it would be about the same, I would assume, as what.
But I didn't know if you required, I mean, I don't know how health insurance changes if you're under like a retirement health insurance or or how any of that works. I'm. New to government.
So under the new law with the retirement, if you're retired. Um, and you you go back to public service. Then your stipend is no longer available through P R S. So you would need to have, you know. I mean, the the whole conversation piece with this from the time that Dan had started to talk about this was is that. He would basically be coming back, you know, fully, um, you know, insured again and and with the salary.
Okay, so. Okay, um, so his benefits would would stay the same.
Yeah.
Okay, and then um, final question is just how long is he planning to stay in this position and then what's what's the plan after? Because I assume, you know, the the point of the retire rehire is we can't find somebody else to fill that position. So what's the long-term plan?
I'm not sure you get to ask that of an employee that he comes back, he works, he works until he wants to not work anymore very much.
I think I think the whole realm of this is, we've always had, uh, you know, seeking building inspectors for this county. And uh, by Dan staying on, it's really helping us because it's hard to find a brilliant inspector that does. Electrical framing, footers, and a whole array of things where if you go into a, you know, city. Uh, there's an inspector just for electrical, just for this, just for that. So it's it's a unique uh item out here in John County, so. They've, we've always been uh, one person short, right, Dan?
Yeah, um, so Dan Spada, um, so, I mean, we tried to do.
You gotta be sworn in.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, raise your right hand. Um, do you sort of testify truthfully in the matter under perjury of or penalty of perjury?
Yeah. So we've we've tried to do uh, through the last couple of years, try some succession plans of individuals to take over my position as a building official. When I retired on January thirty-first, um, we had, I think. Three candidates in that position, two of them have left to to seek other opportunities elsewhere for higher pay. Um, we hired Mike in as the assistant, uh, he's been here for a year and a half. About, um, another discussion about Mike taking the position. Um, we felt there was a little bit more training and a little bit more knowledge that he wants to get into position before taking that over. So that was the discussion that I had then about coming back, step back into this position. I'm, um, you know, we've had discussions, you know, whether it's a two-year plan, a three-year plan, and a five-year plan, I'm not sure. Um, you know, I mean, I, I said I'd like to get to enjoy retirement someday, um, but at the same time, I enjoy.
Listen, Linda, if you want to hear.
Um, you know, so that's, I I mean, it also depends on where we're at, you know, with with staffing levels.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's what my question is, is like, how are you gonna figure out with that? How are you gonna have a staffing that's sufficient? And is there a plan? But it sounds like you're working on it, right?
You're fortunate just to hire another inspector. Um, so we're back to a level that we were a couple of years ago. Um, obviously, the the county is still, you know, moving forward with a lot of development and um, building projects, um, so they're staying busy. Um. You know, it's uh, hopefully sooner than later, um, somebody takes the building official position, um, but yeah, it's, I mean, we're working on a succession then.
Okay, trick.
Thank you, Dan.
I don't have anything else.
I guess, you know, just just for me to add to this is that, you know. You've been involved with, uh, you know, through two different building, you know, commissioners over the last thirteen years and. Um, it's been a major challenge all the time to find somebody that has your qualifications, Dan, and and to be able to to have that. And I think what what people sometimes fail to realize is like in the county of Georgia. Our building department handles every. The they handle City of Sharding, all the townships, all the villages, other than South Russell. And so so we're burdened pretty much with the entire county as far as handling that. In addition to that. I mean, we have our a fee structure, the permits and everything that is. More than covered what what that department's salary is. So as far as salaries go. The permits alone, and it's not that the permits are at at an absorbent amount that we. If anything, we're probably less than most other, um, most other municipalities and counties around us, so. You know, we've got, you know, super proud of our our building department and the people that we've got, but there's no doubt about it. We're tasked heavy. And with, you know, just like today, we just are moving to to do another annexation for another building project in Middlefield, which is going to be. Multiple units with multiple inspections and multiple permitting processes and reviews, so. Um, at the end of the day, I mean, Dan, I you you look three years, four years younger, so I'm wondering if this is what I wanna, since you've been gone, but. Um, I I respect the fact that you wanna. Come back and do this because, you know, you're you've been definitely missed and you you'll you'll, you know. You're you bring a lot of value to this organization and I thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I still feel I have some fun blocking in to do this. Um, obviously, when you're in your chest, that's how to help see if you can well serve the general public. It, once it's in, it's kind of in you. Sure, um, there's there's plenty of opportunities out there. Obviously, um, I I live out here, you know, my family visits every structure, I. We inspect, you know, so there's some comfortability with that, knowing that my guys, we did that, right? Um, you know, so actually, there's there's some pride in wanting to work where you live as well, so that's that's the purpose of wanting to to come back here as opposed to seeking employment elsewhere right now.
Thanks. Any other comments? I uh. Close the hearing.
Ten twelve.
Ten twelve.
Here I'm back.
Twenty-five.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the next few resolutions twenty-five dash oh four oh one. Reappointing Commissioner James W. Warwick, Region thirteen, representative member to the One Ohio Government Support for three-year term, March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, through March twenty-nine, twenty twenty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, so I've got a question. So as far as with the motion to with with um, within, is this something that we would take action on? Next week to officiate it or what's the how what's the process?
Um, the prosecutor's office changed the process from what typically had been done in the past on any one of these. Um, and now you cannot take action until April first.
Okay.
So we have to wait until April first and at that point when you can take um, action and then you can reappoint him apparently effective that day.
Okay.
So it's a little different.
Okay, we're down to item twenty-six.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the next key resolution twenty-five dash oh four two honoring Ellie Roachubak. From Junior Girl Scout Troop seven one three two six for achieving the bronze award, the highest honor for junior girl scout. Um, you did the rest of the troop last year.
Yes.
Um, she's a new member to this troop this year and they did the same project again for the job and family services. Sponsor a family program. They did the seniors for John County again in December. And um, I think they actually did it doing over forty bags this year for the seniors.
I thought that was a nice project.
So.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-six.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Before we do more discussion, I have a brief add-on. The maintenance department is requesting the board approve the placement of Kim Montori on paid administrative leave during the period of. March ninth, twenty twenty-five through March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
What was the period?
March ninth to March thirteenth.
So she's, it's eleventh. So she's already on paid administrative.
Yes, right away to the ninth. This was uh, language given to us by the prosecutor's office.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
No.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Christie's gonna, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, Christie's gonna talk to you about the first item and then I will talk to you about the second one.
Um, I emailed Ellie, you about a week or so ago, about a request that I received from Roger Peterson from D E S. Regarding wanting to have a work session discussion with all of you regarding um, special county teams that they have that include the dive team, fire investigation. Um, hazmat, their drone team, and they just he wants to just go um, over all of you without view about. How they are organized and how they are funded and that kind of stuff. Um, so I'm looking to um, do this. Work session outside of a regular meeting just based on how large our our regular sessions have been.
Okay.
Um, so I'm looking to see if you're available for next Tuesday approximately maybe eleven thirty maybe. Um, to have this discussion.
Next Tuesday?
The eighteenth.
I'm good.
So it would be after regular session.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So you'd have your regular meeting and then we would close it out and then we would have the work session starting at approximately eleven thirty.
Are you gonna bring sandwiches?
I don't know, but uh, Mr. Gasper is also coming with Roger from Sharter Party.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm I'm good. I'm good. Next week, eleven thirty.
Okay, so um, it would be a motion to schedule a work session for Tuesday, three eighteen at eleven thirty A M.
There are motions.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
We have some folks here today to talk with you about the change order that we have brought to you a couple of times and you had questions about. We have Lee from our The Architect, we have Randy representing the courthouse, and we have Jared Parker, who is our representative from M V five. Um, you have in front of you um, information that was sent to us by Jared to give a a deeper explanation of the different items contained in this change order. And then I've also given you a copy of the original one. It has, you know, a lot of detail. So I guess this is your opportunity to get your questions answered about. This change order, as you know, it is an aggregation of a number of different items pertaining to millwork, podiums, countertops. Um, data drops. Intercom systems, um, a big chunk of it has to do with the um, security gate. To the secure parking behind the courthouse, so. I guess, do you want them to come up and talk with you?
Yeah, please.
Good morning.
Alex, please. State your name, please.
Jared Parker.
Lee Rebert.
And Randy Hall of the courthouse.
Um, I want to mention one thing before we start. The uh. Last July, when they came in front of. Uh, commissioners with a change order for the data drops.
Yes.
That was. That was purely for the data drops. It was nothing, we knew that some electrical outlets would need to be added because of that. We knew we had to take out casework with that. The contractor, Infinity, made a decision to just try to get that in front of you with just the data drops. And we're gonna separate out the other little things that we're talking about at the time. Um, so when we put out the second bulletin. It got more and more confused that there were data drops in this bulletin. There really. There really is not. Those were in that first bulletin.
Okay, so the quantity of data drops that's in this change order request is only two. Uh, and that is item number four. Um, so kind of to. Have an overview of of what I've got here for the change order request number sixteen breakdown. There are seven items listed there on that sheet and what that is, if you go to Infinity's. Change order request number sixteen on the notes section. It breaks out the millwork, the monitor brackets, the intercoms. The T V and electrical power revisions, exterior gate and wall revisions. These seven items is what I've broken out for each of those bullet point items. And so it kind of just gives you a summary of what that cost is and and where it transpired, where that addition came from. Um, so for instance, on the first one for the millwork revisions and two additional courtroom podiums. Rough cost is fourteen thousand nine hundred and two dollars. So this was a request by the judges for modifications to the millwork to accommodate some copier and printers at some of the offices. This was all via an email chain that we have on record from May fifteen, two thousand twenty-four to June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. This was mainly between Delta, which is the court I T, the judges, um, T D A, which is Lee and Brad, um, and M V five. M V five, which was Brandon Pacella at the time working on the project.
Why? Why is this so high for the millwork? That seems like a lot of money to me for just millwork changes.
Yes, um, so in the change order request, um, if you go to the sheet that says N R C Incorporated at the top. This is where the fourteen thousand nine hundred and two dollars is coming from. There is some deletions of plastic laminate uh, cubbies and countertops and some lockers. Uh, but there's also the addition of the solid surface countertops in lieu of the plastic laminate countertops. So the countertop changes is where some of your cost increases is coming from as well as the two podiums.
And by solid surface, what does that mean? Wood or what is what does that mean?
The solid surface is that countertop on. You see on top here.
Yes.
Not not plastic laminate.
Okay, so this is like quartz or something like that?
More durable.
And why? Why do we make that change?
Um. Somehow that was done during the submittal process to cha- to change it or to. Let N R C know that it was it was solid surface, not plastic laminate. And then also part of that uh, change order too, or that from them was the. The podiums were supposed to be in the furniture package like that one. But then they determined it'd be better to give this millwork contractor the podiums and put them in the millwork. So that wouldn't be furniture. That way it would match the, you know, match all the millwork. That was another change that. Just makes sense. Either way, it was gonna be thought as a podium.
So then do we have an offset on the other on the other side?
Seems like.
In the furniture package.
Right.
So since this was so early on as a change, it was never included in the furniture packages um. Drawing set, so whenever they received um, the drawings from myself, they never would have priced it to begin with. Because it wasn't in that package. It was already eliminated.
Had it been, and it would have been an add-on either way. Because the furniture is not included in the the twenty millionth of the project.
You have you. You have you guys gotten any estimates of what furniture is gonna end up costing?
Yes, we have. Um, we have dwindled it down to uh one vendor to select and move forward with. Um, right now, that number is sitting at about, I want to say it's six hundred and one thousand dollars.
Are they using anything from the old old courthouse?
There is gonna be some things used such as like the judges' desks, uh, some chairs, some other tables are gonna be moved over as well.
But can you say that? What did you say the furniture cost was? Six hundred and one thousand?
Thousand dollars, correct, and that does include also the there's a high-density shelving, which is a pretty good-sized chunk. Um, that's going to be included in that package as well.
Okay.
Right now, that cost is about thirty-five thousand dollars.
And that's included in the six hundred one?
Correct.
Okay, can we um can we go through then this this uh sheet?
Yes, so number two, installing the monitor brackets. Um, so this originally was going to be a county responsibility. We felt that it was going to be better ease of access for Infinity to just pick up the scope of work and install the TV monitors themselves. That way they would. Um, either install it to the blocking behind the wall, the studs behind the wall, and also align it properly with the power outlets, H D M I cables, uh, internet hookups, uh, things of that nature. So. Essentially, the idea is to have Infinity install those brackets, and then uh the county would come in behind and just hang those TVs right on those mounting brackets. So we're again, that is another cost that. Would have been uh included uh by the county to begin with. We're essentially just transferring that scope of work to the contractor instead. Intercom system, uh, number three, intercom systems for second and third floor interview rooms. Um, so this was an item that was added during a drawing review and a field review. This was between uh T D A and um the general contractor. Um, Lee, you might be able to expand on this a little bit more.
Yeah, between the interview room and the um holding cell, there's glass, and it's the one option is just talk through the glass in a hole. When we were looking at, um, he was building the C N U walls at the time, the contractor said, how about he just puts in some um junction boxes, just in case we want an intercom. So we went out and just asked our total, you know. Technology consultant to give us an idea of what that would be. That went into the little ten, they gave us a price on it. That's all it is right now is a price to do that. Like, we made sure that he, if we wanted to do it, it's already in the walls.
So we don't really know if we want to do that?
Well, this is called a change order request.
Correct, correct.
Not a change order.
Right, so currently, there's only been four change orders on the courthouse. This is just request number sixteen.
Correct. I mean, I think at least that intercom and probably the next one, too, we need to have A D P approval on those.
We're working on that.
Okay, so I don't think we can just approve those.
Um, and then if you want me to go on to number four here, the TV data drops and TV mounts. So TV data drops, there's only two of them in this change order request, and that's about seven hundred dollars. Of the numbers, and then there's the TV mounts. So the TV mounts themselves, again, were going to need to be purchased. Um, these are going to be purchased uh by their I T subcontractor. Um, and then item A here kind of describes the two TV data drops that are being added in. So it was discussed to have. Display monitors um added into the lobby and then the probation office, which is, I believe, Nicole's office.
So on that A D P thing, though, isn't the court under their own I T?
Uh, with Velta's group?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, are they are they participant about A D P on that? Do they need to A D P approval?
It's my understanding that anything that connects to the uh network has to have approval from the A D P board. And we're working on that. Um, but it's also my understanding that a a staff member from A D P has been involved from the beginning in terms of the spec-ing of things and what have you. So. Um, we're we're working on that.
Could mention, it's also Court I T's policy to coordinate with A D P and to follow the regulations. When when involving I T issues.
Because are you guys on the founding network at the courthouse?
Yes.
And then number five is somewhat connected to item number four. If you go back to Infinity's uh change order request, uh, the electrical power revisions. And this also goes into Lee's comment to begin with, when he was talking about the uh previous uh data drops that were added in. These are now those receptacles that are being added in. Um, so this this is for power that's added for uh new printers that were added in uh from the previous data drop change order. Each receptacle does need its own dedicated circuit and added receptacle for a new data rack. The data rack was added due to B and Courts, which is a subcontractor to Infinity. Uh, B and Courts equipment was not able to fit into the two racks that were already supplied for the project, and an extra one was needed for the space. Um, this also had a receptacle added in the probation office as well. So each of these uh power outlets, um, again, preface, they needed their own dedicated circuit, so they needed their their own breaker, their own wiring, and their own outlet themselves.
Okay.
It wasn't something that could just be data chained together. They needed to be on their own dedication. Number six, the exterior gate conduit for the card reader and intercom had interest to the security gate. Um, so this is, um, as Linda said previously, this is a a larger chunk of the change order request, roughly about sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, this was requested by the judges and the sheriff in a coordination meeting trying to determine accessibility. The cost is to relocate the intercom and gate reader from the Sallyport Mandor to the gate instead. Um, this required a new housing and some electrical and data modifications. And this was also discussed um during an access control meeting that was held on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and also in uh email communication. On July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four to July sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. This all included Infinity, uh, T D A, Dawson Baker, and M V five. Last one here, number seven, uh, wall revisions at the security desk. So this is a credit of two thousand dollars. Um, what it was is the wall behind the security desk was originally scheduled to be full glass. Um, but after communicating this information with the sergeant, um, it was determined that they wanted to have a rifle rack located behind the security desk. And so that it could be somewhat hidden, uh, so you couldn't see it behind that glass wall. Uh, we deducted some of the glass and just added in a wall partition, added in a power outlet. Because the rifle rack needs to be connected to power uh twenty-four seven to be operable. So that's that deduct for two thousand dollars there.
Well, that one sounds great.
I'll try to get more of those.
Yeah.
Working on that. Um, so if you add up all these costs that I have put in here, it comes to about forty-seven thousand dollars. So I made the note there at the bottom that the above costs do not include pricing for any of the bonds, overhead and profit, insurance, or fees. But if you add all those in from the change order request, it does come to fifty thousand. So I tried to break out these prices as best as I could for y'all to be able to review.
I guess I have a question that is. How long can we delay making a decision on this before it starts to negatively impact the project in any way?
The brackets, I mean, it's they're just gonna be purchased. Yeah, there's time for the brackets. I mean, the millwork, it probably. Um, if you're deleting millwork, they don't, that's just taking it off their drawing, so that's not a issue. I mean. They're doing shop drawings for millwork, but if we don't do a cabinet, that's. That's easy. They haven't built them yet, put it that way. But now the exterior gate, even that, that's underground work that they haven't done yet, so.
I mean, I think that one possibly needs A D P approval, too, is that number six.
I believe we're tentatively scheduled for the eighteenth on that. Is that correct, Frank?
Yes, ma'am.
To um. Bring everything before the A D P board. They've already looked at summer or March. In March.
Okay.
Because they're gonna start pulling cable. The twenty-fourth of March, we have to have a decision.
Okay.
So I'm guess guessing I'm going to um pause on this until after the eighteenth, and then we'll try and have an answer for you after that.
Okay.
Does that sound right to you?
Sure.
Yeah.
We can we can vote on eliminating the glass now, so.
That's all right. We'll discuss you today.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, let's do that now.
Okay, we're moving to public comment.
Howard, South Russell Village, has the Commissioner decide what to do to the uh condition of the air force?
I'm pretty sure that the we'll get things back next Tuesday.
Think it'll be done, yeah. It's good to see.
I was just gonna tell you, but you interrupted me a little bit. Uh, probably next week, we should have the documents back from the prosecutor's office.
Will it be in writing?
Yes.
Well, in both parties.
Yes. And that's how it works.
Presented to us next week on Tuesday.
If everything goes right, yes, that's that's the plan. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Um, Skip Clitwell, Chester, Ohio. Need that in the record or not? Um, Carolyn and Ralph, thank you for asking the questions on the camera relative to the construction project. Very responsible thing to do. Um, can you tell me who who's responsible? Or what's the management process for the new courthouse? Who's the watchdog for your county to ensure things don't go out of line, to make proper decisions? How is that? How is that set up?
Yeah, do you want to answer? I mean, I asked that question last week, so.
We are represented it. Our our owner's rep is M V five. Jared Parker is here to talk. He's there regularly. Obviously, our architect is watching our interests. Glenn is performing a walkthrough weekly, and I attend the weekly construction meetings.
So so there's nobody from the county. Right now, you've got the fox watching the hen house.
Um, no.
Nobody watching the cost and making sure the cost staying in line relative to this project, because it looks to me, and I'm gonna be making a public information request for. Um, the original contract and all the changes, because it looks like it's out of control, like somebody is allowing. Uh, decisions to be made along the process work, you know, let's just put in a new set of uh desks and. Let's go buy a new, you know, cold iron through the wall. There's no way anybody's managing the project appropriately. So can you respond to that?
Um, I would say that you're not characterizing the situation correctly, and that I just told you lots of people have their eyes on it all the time. And the fight is our owner's rep. They work for us. They're representing our interests and keeping an eye on everything all the time. I consider our architect to be representing us as well, and they're there all the time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Um, Ralph, so Mr. Speller, I know you used to be against retire, rehire, so can you tell me how this situation is?
Yeah, um. Finding uh finding building inspectors is almost impossible. Finding a building commissioner with the background. And knowledge that Dan has is like finding a needle in a haystack. So at the end of the day, I'm uh, I feel that I'm very fortunate that Dan wants to. You know, continue in this role because it is so difficult to find.
Any other public comments? Okay, public comment that's closed.
But the other ones, alas. We'll probably switch twenty-nine and thirty. Um. So you guys, I think it started with what you wanted to do.
We'll start with thirty first. Let me do.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a property employee to the county administrator position pursuant to O R C one twenty-one point two-two gene one.
So motion.
Second.
Mr. Speller.
Hey.
Yes.
I believe Kathy will be assisting you with this.
Okay.
Want to just. I know. I will not be participating, so. We've had a Ked.
We're back. No, no action taken. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for purposes of considering purchasing property for public purposes. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Speller.
Hi.
Yes. Linda. Did the pizza come today?
Oh, my gosh.
Tell me, you didn't tell me.
All right.
I hear the west.
Forty-six. Any action?
No action taken.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.